I have a couple minor corrections to the agenda. The resolution that we passed at eight forty, I had it down as two thousand fifteen dash eight, it should be dashed in. And then likewise on the one below at eight fifty, I had two thousand fifteen dash nine, it should be dash eleven.
Move to approve the agenda with those modifications?
I'll second.
We have a motion second to approve the agenda as modified. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both nay. Motion carried. Okay, we have minutes from our last meeting in March twenty-three. I'm going to condition our directions to those.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
I'll second.
We have a motion second to approve the minutes. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both nay. Motion carried. Moving along with the agenda, we have some certificates to present this morning for county employees who've been five, ten, fifteen, twenty, fifty years, so forth.
It is very dear.
You want to call your name and hand your certificate? You can call your name if you come up, please.
Roger Bennett.
Roger? Roger Bennett, twenty years of outstanding service. Congratulations.
You do. Lisa Deesford.
Lisa. You've got ten years in the practice. Congratulations.
Linda Paulson's not here, but she had, if you want to say how many years.
She's got, uh, forty years. Yeah. I'll get her later.
Paula Green.
Paula?
See Paula? Paula had...
She had twenty years. Harlan Hanson, hundred and twenty years.
They do like that sometimes.
They do. Jerry Haley, ten years in the practice. Nancy Parsons, fifteen years. Congratulations. David, fifteen years of keeping the place looking better.
Ryan Stein? I don't see Ryan here either. Tracy Stigall?
I mean, Ryan, yeah.
Ryan, he had fifteen years.
Oh, where's... Linda.
Fifteen years. Stay up, stand up, Linda, here it is. You're already done. Give Linda hers, yeah.
Hundred and forty years. Congratulations. Ten years, forty years.
Okay, Tracy's not here. Tim Twiller, I don't see Tim either. And Kenny Volland.
Kenny. He's been here fifteen years, Tracy was fifteen years.
And Tim's was...
Tim was.
How many years was Tim?
Tim was fifteen. That's a lot of years of service. Thank you very much. Okay. Moving along with the agenda, do we have any other concerns? Anybody like to speak?
Can I get a quick picture out in the hall?
Sure. We got time, we got five minutes. We got five minutes. Some more. Quick recess. Quick recess.
I'll take yours.
I am late, you are late.
I know, I know.
My dad was on up and down all. Are there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak this morning? General comments not on the agenda. We gotta wait till eight forty then for the first public hearing. Do you think anyone can do?
Sure, the warrant permit for Jerk Chris Wild.
That sounds good.
Everything's in order. Jerk Chris Wild has decided they want to add selling wine with the rest of the evidence that they have. They have no list, no issues with the sheriff at all, I checked on that. So, it's in order.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second to approve the wine application for Jerk Chris Wild. Any discussion?
How many of these do we have out in the county, you know, that are actually in the county park?
About five.
About five.
Yeah, because they have to live outside the city limit.
They go for a year at a time, is that correct?
Most of them do. Sometimes you'll have somebody that'll apply for a five day or something.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion and second, say aye.
Aye.
Both nay. Motion carried. Okay. We got an applicator, Dean Nichols, seasonal conservation camp host, Gottes Park, at the rate of two hundred and thirty-five dollars a week, effective April first. Is that a new employee or was he here last... Well, these are the people who just, they, they're out at the head of the campgrounds, they take care of the campers in the campgrounds, collect the fees and those type of things. Basically, yeah, they live there all summer long and take care of any issues they have out there between campers.
Yeah, we have to reapprove them every year. I think Nichols is, and the other one might be a new one, there's a second one.
The second one, Martin.
That might be a new one.
We have a motion to approve Dean Nichols. Paul McMoore, motion to approve Dean Nichols for Gottes Park camp host. There are... We have a motion second to approve Dean Nichols, thirty-five a week, effective April one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We use same action here for Earl Martin, seasonal camp conservation host Sheldon Park at two twenty-five a week, and I assume he's a new employee, is that right?
That I don't know, I didn't ask.
I think he is.
Should be named as, no.
I think he is.
We entertain a motion to approve him.
So move.
I'll second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both nay. Motion is carried. All right.
We've already done one for Rutland.
It's eight forty.
Is Rutland... Isn't there a camp host there?
Rutland takes care of that, the city does.
We'll open a public hearing for discussion of loan arrangements, money to borrow on the LEC.
So a motion?
We can have a motion. I'll make a motion to open up the public hearing for a loan agreement for purchase of equipment for the LEC. Resolution two fifteen dash ten.
Give me a second. Okay, we are now open for discussion. All those in favor of opening the public hearing say aye.
Aye.
Both nay. Motion carried. Okay, we'll open in discussion, we'll fix this around a little bit. Rick, can you give us any update on this or...
Well, this is the maximum amount that we cannot go over. We're gonna do our best to keep it well below this amount. Equipment cost is always kind of shocking, some of this electronics, cost of computers and screens and radio systems and those type of things. And that's what this budget is for, is mainly the equipment that we're going with. It's actually a lot of updating, just because it's, we would've had to purchase a lot of this equipment even if we didn't do this expansion, because the radio equipment is about double its lifespan already and so it's time things need to be taken care of.
Have you heard anything around the community, anybody's pros or cons about this? They're putting new issue, from what I hear.
I haven't had any calls from anyone, one way or the other, I guess. I've heard people have onto it.
Well, I hear no more discussion. We need a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second of Harlan, those in favor of closing the public hearing on this issue, thirty-five saying aye.
Aye.
Both nay. Our next action item would be to approve the, like, resolution two thousand fifteen dash ten. Peggy, you wanna read that through? Part six, exactly.
I'd be dashed eleven.
Eleven, it's eleven, no, it's ten.
Ten, this one's ten.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Resolution two thousand ten.
We're, resolution taking action to enter into a general obligation communications equipment acquisition loan agreement. Whereas the Board of Supervisors, the Board of Humboldt County, Iowa, fifty-four proposed to enter into a loan agreement, the loan agreement, and to borrow money here, there under in a principal amount not to exceed six hundred and eighty thousand pursuant to the provisions of section three thirty-one point four oh two, section three thirty-one point four forty-one subsection two B seventeen, and section three thirty-one point four four three for the purpose of paying the cost to that extent of acquiring and installing peace officer and emergency services, communication equipment and systems, and pursuant to law and duly published notice of the proposed action, which has held a hearing thereon on March thirty, two thousand fifteen. Now therefore, it is resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Humboldt, Iowa as follows. Section one, the Board of Supervisors hereby determines to enter into the loan agreement in the future and orders that the general obligation bonds or notes be issued at such time and evidence thereof. The Board of Supervisors further declares that this resolution constitutes the additional action required by section three eighty-four point two four A of the Code of Iowa. Section two, all resolutions and orders or parts thereof in conflict with the provisions of this resolution to the extent of such conflict are hereby repealed. Section three, this resolution shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption and approval as provided by law, passed and approved March thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Thank you, Peggy. It's about said in one sentence, but we have to do. Anybody got other discussion about that? Care to make a motion to adopt that resolution?
I'll make a motion, resolution two thousand fifteen dash ten.
I'll second.
Motion by Rick, second by Mark. Adopt resolution two thousand fifteen dash ten. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both nay. Resolution was adopted and there's a motion carried. Listening to our schedule, we have the next hearing at nine fifty, nine o'clock, Paul to me here, nine thirty, nine forty, Jenna. Steve. I guess we go around and have some committee reports.
Yep. On Wednesday, March twenty-fifth, I was in Clear Lake Island for a CSS meeting, and this is the time we met at the village, um, Opportunity Village, I guess, and I'd never been in the back section of that where their main office and rooms are and stuff, so we had a meeting down there. Things are moving along fairly well. Afterwards, we went over and looked at the children's autism center, and this is something that our region funded a little over a year, year and a half ago, we put in, I can't remember the dollar amount, I think it was somewhere near the twenty-five to forty thousand dollar range. With this money, it helped them get started, and what really made this, when she presented herself, a mother of two children that have autism, was going to be probably one of the coworkers in there, and she presented herself well. Because of their success, they've been able to hire two certified behavioral analysts, board certified behavioral analysts, and this is not an easy thing to do, and to get them to come, this couple's coming from Baltimore, Maryland, it's a couple, and they wanted to work in a smaller community, that's where they grew up, I guess, in small towns, and this is pretty, a big achievement for them, because there's only one autism center like this in Meseta Isle right now, and they are doing amazing things with these kids, but it's the commitment of the people, and this mother that really had two kids, that, I mean, she really pushes this program. They got several volunteers, they're getting money from United Way, so our money's been matched by United Way and other sources, and they're hoping to start one in Fort Dodge maybe down the road, so.
What kind of qualifications do you have to have?
For the, these two...
This couple?
Yeah, this couple here, yeah, I believe it's a behavioral degree, they got bachelor or doctorate degrees in this. Uh, let's see, they graduate from University of Illinois, master's degree doctrine philosophy and school of philosophy, and common doctrine of philo, it's philosophy and school of philosophy. But they started here last summer, and they're also working with tele site, with a psychiatrist that's really likes the stature of where this program's working. They're probably working with, I thought they said forty some kids, I mean, there's a lot of kids they're working with, and just the techniques you, they went, they used, they went through and showed us kind of how they did the program, and just amazing how you have to get down to reach these children at their level and get them into their, open up to them, so it's a long process, but I was pretty excited about that, because I was, I made a motion to approve that money, and then you start spending money and you didn't know where you were going with some of it. This program's really worked out, so.
I guess, maybe an answer question you can't answer, but how do they measure success with something like that?
Well, most of these kids, it's, it's getting to talk even, to open.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, they're, they're working with their skills, you know, to get them to handle their fears, their emotions, their tempers, I mean, it's probably, it's an ongoing thing, they had kids raging from, you know, twelve, eighteen, eighteen months to eighteen, so they're even working with some older kids, yeah. That's just, we won't go up to over eighteen, but there is a need, and then they go, you know, they kind of work with the schools and they work with the, the parents come in with the children, and they sit down and they teach them these training, these techniques to reach their kids, you know, the ways that help open them up, and I was pretty impressed, I mean, it's, it's really a good program, and there was four people that took us around, they were all part of the program, and, you know, each had a different, in smaller groups, but all of them are very committed to working with the program. And to get these two young people in here with these degrees is huge, because it's hard, it's hard to get people in.
I think it's hard life skill, just teaching how to take care of yourself.
It gets to that eventually, like brushing, you know, just like getting into good habits and behavior, behavior is the biggest part of it, so. So that was interesting. And then on Thursday, we had a CFR meeting in Webster City at five, it was executive meeting, and then at six was a regular meeting, and cash flowing well, we'd taken in over a hundred thousand per month, and we paid off the two hundred and sixty-seven thousand Ames building, we don't have any money borrowed right now. It's a big success from where we were three years ago, so. They're looking at plans for a new building down in Fort Dodge in the future that, that still weighs out, but I think at least we've got some direction on how we want to handle things, so. That's all I have, I think.
It's about time.
Yeah.
We'll finish reports later. The time has arrived for public hearing in the LEC building. I have a motion to open a public hearing.
So move.
Mr. Bahlin?
Second.
Second by Mark. Open a public hearing and discussion in the LEC building, discuss loan agreement, if you've found that's in the public. Anybody got some comments and thoughts to make concerning this proposal? Anything the Board wants to say? Rick, maybe you tell us about that, you've kind of been our lead man on this.
Well, I know this has been in talk about for several years, from what I understand, and it's too bad we didn't do it several years ago, when it, there was more funding out there for grants and things like that, it would've been a lot, would've been, well, it would've been cheaper too, because the price of building goes up, but it still costs money, whether it comes from your grant or your tax dollars, it's taxpayers' money's paying for it, there's no, it's not as free money in government, and people seem to think it's free, but it's not, it all comes from the taxpayer. And this is about, it's gonna give a lot more room for Sheriff's Department and the city official police. Our dispatch center is gonna be updated to a modern facility, it's gonna be handicap accessible, which it isn't right now. I guess it is somewhat accessible, does it, but it does not meet your requirements. It's gonna be more energy efficient, our utility bills are quite high on those, and they're gonna do a lot of insulation into the old part also, some new windows and things like that, and rewire the whole building, not just in addition, there's pretty extensive remodeling of the old, the old Sheriff's Department, which will be, uh, something Dean has fell on plays, will have to struggle with for a few months, but it'll be worth the mess, I'm sure. And it's, uh, I think one of the biggest improvements is gonna be our evidence rooms are gonna be so much more secure and have a lot more room, because it's, we have to save so much of this, uh, evidence for years. Some of the stuff is thirty, forty, sixty years old, and you have to keep it until the people involved have all passed away. So it, uh, it gets to be a lot of record-keeping and organization and things like that. So I think it's an expansion that's badly needed.
Other comments? Well, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Mr. Bahlin?
I'll second.
Second by Rick. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Both nay. Okay, our next item would be to approve the resolution, I'm gonna ask Peggy, you bring the right motion, you're gonna be asked to approve.
Okay, this is resolution two thousand fifteen eleven. Resolution adjouring additional action to enter into a general fund loan agreement. Whereas pursuant to the provisions of section three eighty-four point two four A of the Code of Iowa, Humboldt County, Iowa, the county, has fifty-four proposed to contract indebtedness and enter into a general fund loan agreement, the loan agreement, in a principal amount not to exceed eight hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of paying the cost to that extent of constructing improvements to the county law enforcement center and providing for the finishing and equipping thereof, and has published notice of the proposed action and has held a discussion meeting thereon on March thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. And whereas chapter three eighty-four point two four A provides that no additional action may be taken with respect to entering into the loan agreement for a period of thirty days following the discussion meeting, and it is now necessary to adjourn such action to a future date. Now therefore, it is resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Humboldt County, of County of Humboldt, County, Iowa as follows. Section one, the Board hereby adjourns additional action with respect to entering into the loan agreement to its meeting at, and we need to set a time, on May fourth, two thousand fifteen, at which time the Board will make its determination with respect to entering into the loan agreement. Section two, all resolutions and orders or parts thereof in conflict with the provisions of this resolution to the extent of such conflict are hereby repealed. Section three, this resolution shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption and approval as provided by law, passed and approved March thirty, two thousand fifteen.
Thank you, Peggy. That's the right resolution, two thousand eleven, we need to act on this morning, we need to set a, we need to figure out the resolution.
We should, uh, time.
Time.
We've got a date.
And we need May, May fourth, don't we, a time to do that? Get them to get it right.
We can do just as we have with these, eight forty?
That'll work.
Okay.
Eight forty, sounds good.
Anyone you'd like to approve the resolution of two thousand fifteen dash eleven and six?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Eight forty?
I'll make a motion.
Second? Second by Harlan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both nay. Motion is carried. Resolution passed. Okay, I have a boss that's supposed to have another hearing. Anybody here that's on the agenda, we'll put Tim in. Rick, you wanna go ahead with your...
Oh, okay. Um, Tuesday at noon, I attended the Rotary Club at Miller's Landing. Bill Peterson and Lucas were, was there, and I talked to the Rotary, brought about basically the structure of county government and why the, we put the handout of why county matters, and it was interesting, you know, a few of the people there asked questions about our gas tax, and Bill had the answers for them, which was nice, and, uh, because they were thinking that, you know, so eighty percent of this ten cents a gallon was going to, like, the city of Des Moines, and, and it doesn't, it's, uh, almost like thirty percent of it goes to the counties, it's divvied up to the counties based on their population and the amount of miles of roads they have, and, uh, so that was, that was good information to get out to them, and also a bunch of it goes to the cities, a certain percentage of it goes to city, uh, cities, Fort Dodge, Humboldt, well, it's all based on the size and the amount of roads they have, so. The money's going out there to where it needs to be, which was, that's, is one of the reasons I supported that, was because it was designed, it wasn't gonna go just to a certain project. It had to go to the counties, it had to go to the cities. The state couldn't just take it and decide where they wanted to spend it. So I think it was a, a good way to go for now, um, give us the money to help improve our roads that had been lacking for several years. And, uh, then I had, uh, Tuesday night, I had, I'd moved down in Fort Dodge, uh, that was a good meeting also, uh, they talked a lot about Ed Star, which is, we're not through that organization, so, but they did have a, a good meeting. That's about it, Mark.
Okay, uh, Friday the twenty-seventh, I had a telecom, we de, de cap, uh, about sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars we received, and, and we needed a motion to, uh, to approve a fifteen percent recordination of a program that we've got going on, a real program, and that was the only thing I had.
Didn't have anything, Pearl.
Grand Canyon.
Grand Canyon, yeah.
All right. Uh, I also attended a meeting with Rick on Tuesday, I think Bill and Lucas could've gone in another two hours if they wanted to, people were really asking a lot of questions, so we cut them off and sent them home. Uh, also Tuesday night, Pat and I and Peggy went to township training meeting, uh, I gave you guys a little test this morning, really, I learned an awful lot, these township trustees have a lot more to do than I thought they did, resolving contests.
Well, books have one.
Okay.
Trustee, you get Peggy one.
But anyway, Peggy picked up a book from the extension service, teach you guys, have one of those, it's kind of interesting, go see, go through and see what they have. We gave you the task, we also gave you the answers, which you should've done. They made us read the book.
Were all the township trustees there at the discussion?
Not all of them, still about twenty.
That's the area you had a fan of like that?
Yeah, but that's...
Okay, good.
And then on Thursday morning, I went to the area housing meeting down in Fort Dodge. We meet quarterly down there, nine, eight, ten county area, talk about things that's going on in the region, and it was talk about some of the financial programs that are available for people wanting rehab houses and fix up houses, and, and talk about some topics we might have in the future on roundtable discussions. Aspects is always a, a big discussion, and lead-based paint, and the Hebrew Grove people reported on, remember once I told you about, the city had gone together and buying some old houses and re, tearing them down, they're getting into a little trouble now, some of the owners are starting to have a little fit about it, so. It's a good program, but they're having to think through it and go a little slower.
Take every step, yeah.
So that was the extent of my meetings. I see Paul's here, nine o'clock, Mr. Diggs, right on time. We have a public hearing on route five to five, Paul.
In the motion?
Yeah, we do that.
I'll make a motion to open the public... I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, we have motion, second to open public hearing. Discussion, five-year plan, all those here say aye. Aye. Open for discussion, Paul.
Um, we'll see where we go. Can load up the five-year plan if we need to. Um, but at this point, I'm going to review, uh, the additions, uh, to our five-year plan. Uh, the current for the fiscal year two thousand sixteen five-year plan. Uh, as we talked and led in briefly last week, we've added considerable paving for two thousand nineteen. That paving includes P thirty-three, which is, uh, from Rutland to, uh, Bow, uh, about seven miles, uh, total of one point, uh, four million dollars, so we projected one million of that being S T P, that's our federal aid project for, uh, for the, uh, our share of our stiff. P nineteen, uh, P fifty-nine paving is, uh, from, uh, the Webster County line, uh, north. Uh, it's also known as the Badger Blacktop up to the Thor corner. Uh, that's three miles, uh, approximately two hundred thousand miles what we're programming in for it. And finally, uh, the, the last paving would be, uh, P sixty-six paving, uh, that's six point seven miles, uh, from the stop sign in Hardy north to the county line, uh, approximately one point three million dollars worth of paving. Uh, that gives us a fairly full table for paving in fiscal year, or in the summer of two thousand nineteen and it wipes out our federal aid and farm-to-market funds. Our local programming, uh, probably is, uh, is important or more important. Um, we've selected several structures. One of them is a P sixty-six culvert that we've inserted in two thousand eighteen because it is on that stretch of road that will be paved in two nineteen north of Hardy, Iowa. It's, uh, currently, uh, a multiplate, uh, that's, uh, been there, I think since sixty-two or sixty-three. Uh, and it's, if, you'll, you'll know it if you drive it now. Uh, generally, uh, until the frost heat goes out of it, it lays down a little bit, but in the winter, that's the one that, uh, heaves up every year. That and we'll schedule to replace it this summer before we pave it with a box culvert for around, uh, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Another small bridge or a box culvert replacement is over, uh, off of State's Avenue just south of Highway three. It's, uh, as I said last year, it was the first request that I had as a new county engineer fifteen years ago. Second day into the job, a gentleman asked me to replace that because he couldn't get his four-wheel drive with triples on through this eighteen-foot wide structure. And, and, uh, now we're proposing to schedule that in the year twenty twenty. Uh, it's a small, short bridge that we'll replace with a box culvert for another hundred and twenty-five thousand. That, with that addition on State's Avenue, State's Avenue should be a straight shot from Highway three into Webster County without any obstructions or any road ratings. So, uh, it's a, it's an improved, a seventy graded road, so it's a wide right-of-way, but it is non-paved. Um, another addition is, uh, for the year twenty twenty is a P twenty-nine box culvert, which is really at the intersection of the, uh, C forty-nine and the Claire Blacktop, or what we call the Tinkin' School Corner, just on the south radius, there's a laminated wood box culvert that crosses under the road there that's, uh, it's not, it's outlived its life already. It's not in wonderful shape, uh, it's, uh, the bottom, signs of, uh, rotting in the bottom below the waterline. Generally, water sits in the bottom part of that, uh, as Ben Loetz went into it last week and, uh, it's, it, it still has bot, uh, the bottom full of water. I think what happened is it was a four-by-six that they had and to get, to get the, uh, to get it installed with enough cover, they put it below the ditch flow line, so it's, has a permanent pool, more or less. And, and, uh, that's not a good sign now, but, uh, uh, we've heard that in rocking and rolling, uh, whenever, uh, we get the heavy rains that we've known to have in the Pioneer area, it will shake, rattle and roll up above you. That would be scheduled, I think, uh, we got a hundred and five thousand in for that project, uh, in two thousand, twenty twenty. And the last, uh, twenty twenty project is our V R funded bridge, uh, it's, uh, currently a pony trust across Prairie Creek, uh, on, uh, ah, geez, what is it, uh?
Virginia Avenue.
It's on Virginia Avenue. It's just a mile east of, uh, of, uh, the Hardy Blacktop or north of Hardy. And, uh, that structure, uh, will be programmed for a V R for our federal aid project for a total of three hundred thousand. But that's the changes to our five-year plan, um, and, and additions. We move things around as we do, as we discuss our local, the current year, uh, program is already locked in with the county budget, uh, that was approved, uh, a month ago. Um, what we do with the five-year program is, uh, is look into the future and, and for the most part, we're out, uh, several years with this. Uh, nineteen, eighteen, nineteen and twenty got all the changes this year.
So with the added revenue from ten cent tax, that money kicks in with, as far as our budgeting for projects?
Uh, kind of, uh, it's, when we did the low, when we locked in the current year, we didn't have it and didn't count on it. So it's not in the current year, but we are generating it now. Um, it, uh, for the first, for year one, there'd be money on the local side. Uh, we did overprogram somewhat and, and I, I think that will match our overprogram, so it'll allow us to buy, in addition to what we programmed for the local construction for year one, we will be able to buy the new equipment. We added new equipment up and abo, beyond what our, uh, known revenue was at the time. So we budgeted roughly three hundred and fifty thousand more, uh, expense than we did revenue at the time. So, yeah, we kind of accounted for, anticipated it, uh, or we were going to buy down our, our, uh, carryloaders. But, uh, beyond that, the farm-to-market that we discussed for the paving, the two thousand nineteen paving, that was moved up because we already put that additional revenue in the farm-to-market and counted on it. So in our five-year plan, once we get out of year one, it, it's accounted for, uh, in the paving, uh, portion, then the paving side is already, I believe that's what, an additional hundred and twenty-five or thirty thousand a year on the farm-to-market account only. Uh, but, uh, it's in there anyway. And we've always, uh, programmed, uh, our five-year plan was always out there as a plan, but didn't necessarily have the funding to fill what we had in there on our, on needs list on that five-year plan. As you know, we take our wish list through, through the planning stages and if the wish list makes it, it makes the five-year plan. And then at that point, every year, we look at the, the next year or the current year as to what we're really actually going to do and sometimes things move. For instance, we did, I didn't mention, we moved the Pioneer Blacktop back to twenty twenty for paving. I'm not, didn't take it completely out of the program. Webster County's not wanting to do anything with it right now. It's a, be a joint project, so it's still there in year five. It's some of the oldest paving we have, although we did.
It's still holding up pretty well.
We did seal coat it, uh, what, probably three years ago now, we did a single lift on that piece of road and, uh, it's thirty miles of it, or thirty vehicles a day according to the D O T, which I think is wrong. I think we probably have that many semis a day, at least, uh, and, uh, but, uh, nevertheless, our funding and some of our, um, allowed spending is tied directly to that traffic count and it's getting more and more important every day.
Paul asked you the other day, you know, in a five-year plan, if you have a disaster, that can trump the five-year plan of blowing into the carryover, right?
Right. Now, what we always, uh, generally what we look for is disasters. Uh, contrary to popular opinion, we don't spend more than we make. Uh, and the second thing that we do, if we are behind on funds, the last thing that usually gets cut is new equipment. This year's new equipment account is down to a hundred thousand and it's a tractor backhoe and we're working on that now and I will bring you something for that for the future. But if we were behind on it, that'd get pushed into next year.
That's the first thing.
That'd be the first thing and then the local construction would be the second thing that got bumped. You'd pick a project and say, no, let's not do this this year, let's push it back. And, and that's what happens to our five-year program. We pick and parcel and, and go with it.
I think that's where the public likes to see this tax money go into the roads and just not updating equipment and things like that.
Yeah, I know, but, uh, they're, they're tandem, they're one in the same in one extent. Uh, I mean, before the road use tax, uh, in the budgeting process, we ended up having, what, four hundred thousand plus or minus for local construction and new equipment. That's the only two things that you can cut out without paying suffering. They, they're the two easiest ones. I remember we, we held rock at three hundred thousand for the first thirteen years I was here. Uh, fortunately, this year, um, I don't think rock is going to be, I mean, we have some frost foils out there, but, uh, going into the winter, I thought this might be the spring from hell, but it, I think it's going to be all right, so we're going to have normal frost foils, but nothing excessive. So our rock budget should be fine. Um, again, the.
Well, we have mild winter, that's what we.
As we do less and less snow removal, we save more and more rock. And it's, uh, it compounds it if you have more and more snow removal, it generally ties to, uh, more rock and more frost foils and more problems in the spring. But we had, uh, um, an April here two weeks ago that stayed warm several days and evaporated all the moisture out as the frost came out of, most of the frost came out, uh, and as opposed to raining on it when it started that and rutting and bonding, no, we were very fortunate. That saves us a big money right there.
Are there comments from the public regarding what part of this company, anybody have anything to add? Gary?
Yeah, I, no, I know it says everything's locked in for the local year. I don't know who or when the priorities are set for, I know the five-year plan and I've been there, done that, I've done it for eighteen years as supervisor, but, um, I know that plan can change and I'm wondering if any of you supervisors have traveled these roads that are scheduled for this year's replacement. Uh, I, there's very few miles in this county that I haven't traveled in Hardtshire's Road in the last year. And if you take, there's a couple in there that need replacing or work on, but P twenty north of C twenty, north of Addison, C thirty, P thirty north of Bow, you're doing one mile. Is that in conjunction, Paul, with Kasut County working on that road?
Nope.
Well, then I don't see, I guess I have reason, those two miles, you know, could use something, but why are we having a contractor come in to do a one-mile stretch in two areas several miles apart, move his equipment in? We're not going to get a good bit on that kind of project. Why not can, can work with Kasut County and do the whole stretch of P thirty and have us tag on the end of it and save us a lot of money? Uh, you go west of Hardy, the two and a half miles west of Hardy, that probably is the second worst as far as, uh, your program goes for this year, but you take the road north of Livermore up to the Livermore Blacktop, that's in good shape. There's nothing, nothing needed there, really. Uh, I see he put in for nineteen ninety, or it's a twenty nineteen now for P fifty-nine to be repaved, which is the Badger Blacktop, we call it. I mentioned it to you last fall and asked you to discuss it, to see if there were to be something done to maintain that road to keep it from busting up. I've never heard that any discussion was made between the board and Paul on that issue. Uh, if something isn't done till nineteen nineteen, there ain't going to be a road left. Right now, we need to have something put in, uh, for some kind of maintenance, whether it's the slurry for the cracks or something, needs to be done this year. Uh, last fall, uh, I hauled my grain on the gravel road because the blacktop was too rough. It piled my trailers pieces. My neighbor, a year ago this fall, snapped two spindles on his trailer because of the cracks in the road causing his trailer to bounce. Coming back empty from Badger, I would go one mile on it, I'd go two miles on Webster County, one mile in Humboldt and get on the gravel because the trailer was just bouncing so bad you couldn't stand it. And if you have, any of you guys, most of you guys probably have taken the back way to Fort Dodge. If you've driven that road, you know what I'm talking about and it needs to have some work done on it. Uh, I think years ago, before, in the fall, before we set the priorities for the fall and the spring, the supervisor would go out to each district and we would drive the roads that were projected to see whether we felt they qualified or whether we had something worse that needed to be done. I don't know if you guys are doing that, but I suggest that some of that needs to be done because I don't know what the criteria was, it's probably been in the five-year plan due to age, that stretch west of Hardy needs to be done, stretch from Livermore north has to be done because it's been in the five-year plan. Uh, you know, I know that five-year plan can be amended. It always can be amended. So I think we need to, well, I'm glad to see the P fifty-nine is in there, but twenty nineteen, if we wait that long, it ain't going to be there. The other roads, I haven't seen too many, P sixty-six north of Hardy, yeah, that needs work, but it needs that, that culvert or that tube put in there, that's been a bad one for years. Uh, travel that road frequently. Uh, there is another culvert on State's Avenue just south of the Hardy Blacktop. Yeah, we get through it, but it's about twenty-one and a, twenty-one feet. Just squeeze through it with a, with a grain, but it would be one, another one. There's also one on two hundred.
Which one, Gary? I didn't follow that word.
On State's Avenue just south of Hardy, uh, Hardy Blacktop.
Oh, the one that we were talking about.
Yeah, that's, you can just barely squeeze through that puppy. And then there's another one restricted on two hundred and fortieth street out there between, uh, Penn and Quebec that could be worked on sometime too, but, uh, but the big thing is P fifty-nine, the traffic count, you know, if you look at the traffic on these roads, that's, that's where it is at. And the Badger Blacktop, now I have one neighbor that's hauling five to eight loads, semi-loads a day, uh, to the ethanol plant on that road. Uh, that's just one, not counting all the others with new co-op transferring out of Humboldt. If you look at Gosh Park Road, that's taking a heck of a beating with that bridge being closed on Main Street because the new co-op's hauling going to Bad, going to Gosh Park Road instead of, out to Highway one sixty-nine. So almost all this last year's crop has been going down Gosh Park Road. I don't know how empty the elevator is here, but by the time that bridge opens up, there ain't going to be much left in it, I doubt it. So those are things I think you need to take a look at and pay attention to. Gosh Park Road, if it doesn't have something new to maintenance after this all gets done for the cracks, it's going to deteriorate quite fast too.
I would regret some of these because that's exactly, he nailed it on the head on some of these single roads. So we have been waiting patiently for Kasut County on their extensions. I, uh, anticipated Kasut County grading Bill Overton Road because they graded that north piece, because all the penal traffic is coming down that and we're, you can see the rutting. More importantly, if you drive in a light rain, you can see that loaded lane coming from Kasut County heading west on the C twenty itself. We waited and held off on those roads anticipating, trying to get value for the buck to tie in with the Empire of the North, but they have nothing on the five-year program. The nineteen eighty-eight paving of P twenty going into Addison is as old as the paving in Pioneer. That's the oldest we have. And Pioneer's is thirty vehicles a day and I think Addison Blacktop is, uh, a hundred and some, but like I told the board before, I think we can get that many scale tickets out of the Addison Farmers Co-op that came, I mean, there's ways to dispute these traffic counts, but it doesn't matter. Um, anyway, we've tried to do that and what we're looking at piecing, depending on what we do for construction and the board knows that we have been looking at white topping versus asphalt and it depends on the price of the oil as to how that may or may not work. If it's clearly going to be an asphalt project that. If it's clearly gonna be an asphalt project, I don't see a problem with tying all the paving in a bundle and doing two single-mile stretches. And that's what we're looking at, including the Addison and those boat pieces. Because they have been delayed beyond their time, their edges are gone, north of Addison, the edges are gone on that piece north of Bodle. If it's an all asphalt, I don't see a problem tying it. If it's something that we're looking at white topping, we might have a problem. We might do something separate and individually, which we don't wanna do because the economy's at scale, you're right, they're gone. That's why we only pave about every third year, so we're trying to group ten, twelve miles enough to get people interested instead of paving every year. Unfortunately, with those in place, we were looking at the Webster County to, for Blacktop. It doesn't fit in to group the paving until twenty nineteen because that's the next time we have enough farm-to-market funds to fund it. And we have not borrowed ahead on farm-to-market. That's one of the possibilities we have if statewide, if everybody hasn't borrowed ahead, we physically could move those projects up or move that up. We could do it this year, you're right, but again, we're trying to group it. The slurry seal, we've done some of the slurries, the, that might be something that we consider. We're gonna wait till our power line contractor is completely done and gone before we touch anything in that area. We've already had some road ruined, additional road ruined last weekend, if you saw the email. And we'll wait till they're done and gone. Then we might consider a slurry level, they can be done four to five thousand a mile and they'll help the thump to some the bounce for a year. At the end of two years, you won't even know it. And so it's a question of how much we wanna spend now and for the future. We did test the road west of Hardy. It's one of the older roads, that stretch from Hardy to one sixty-nine doesn't have a tremendous traffic count, but it's got aged, it's weathered and checked. And I think because it's not a through road on either end, it hasn't become a truck route for anybody and that's what's saving it.
And structure, it really hard on the roads.
The repeated, the over and all repeated.
The heavyweights.
Yeah, the, as far as...
Ten wagons.
As far as structures, even the one on State's Avenue has been on our radar since the second day. I hadn't even seen it when the gentleman walked into the office fifteen years ago and demanded that we replace it. I did see it shortly after that. Structurally, it's been pretty good shape. It's the concrete, all concrete, no timber, and that's why it's been flipped to where it's at. It still wasn't load graded, but it's, the cracking and some of the deterioration of the concrete is starting to go downhill and that's why it has made the plan now after sixteen years of well. That was in twenty twenty, so it'd be twenty years after the formal request. His issue at the time wasn't that it wasn't structurally sound, it was that he couldn't get through with triples. But a lot of what you have talked about in one form or another, we have on the radar. It may not be as soon as, soon as you like, but it's on the radar. Again, we're trying to avoid the single mile stretches, just as you said, and we're grouping paving. We get roughly, well, it was five fifty, so it'd be about six hundred and seventy thousand a year farm-to-market. And historically, that's all gone into paving. And if we use a nice round number of two hundred thousand a mile, then it doesn't take long to figure out how many miles we can do a year. And that's unfortunately where we're at.
Paul, your two hundred thousand a mile isn't really over-exaggerating because like Wright County figures, what, two fifteen or two and a quarter a mile?
Excuse me?
Only, I mean, you're asking on the cost, I mean, you're not over-inflating the cost of that.
Well, what we have submitted for a stiff project that we still haven't approved, the Rutland to Bodle project that we have for twenty nineteen, the federal aid share of it. That was chosen because of simplicity. With federal aid projects, if you tie up anything to do with bridges, clear zones, sidewalks, we're improving more than the road at that point. And so we kept the simple project to straight paving to try to get the best bang for the buck there. I had comments from all the region, is, is two hundred thousand enough?
That's what I'm saying, I don't think you're over-inflating the cost of paving.
Wright County was using two and a quarter, Webster was using a quarter million.
Webster, Cassuth County done the Hoberton Road up to the Humboldt County line here a few years back, didn't they? Or did they just come to the westbound road?
They just came to the west, they regraded, they, they got right away and flattened the side slopes of the road, did shoulderin' project and widened the whole road grade out. And that was two thousand two, two thousand three somewhere in there, really on. And I was anticipating they'd continue on with that, on down into Humboldt County, which would help. Our rightaways, where we did not get more rightaway and shouldered the roads, leave something to be desired. I mean, they're fine, but we don't have much of a shoulder as we keep paving. And it would be, there'd be a nice candidate to get more rightaway and do some paving. But right away now, how much you wanna pay an acre?
Yeah. Yes.
Yes, my name is Matt Reed, I live at nineteen twenty Florida Avenue, section twenty-four. The project, Paul, that you have out there for that Florida Avenue Road has had a definite goal?
That is for next summer, not this summer. That's in this...
I thought it was two fifteen, two thousand and fifteen you were proposing.
It is fiscal year fifteen project, which...
Not gonna be done until sixteen?
No, no, it must be sixteen project because it's not due to be let till next winter. It's next summer.
Well, anyway, while I'm here, I've got three issues out there.
It's a sixteen project, yes it is.
I visited with you, you know, last, I don't know when it was, fourteen, I thought it was for fifteen, but as long as I'm here.
Nope, fine.
There's three things out there that I wanna make you aware of and maybe you're not even gonna be able to remember this, but there's a... There's a tile that goes under the road. Now, how deep into the ditch will they be going to enhance your road ditches?
Probably match what, we'll probably get into where we were graded at one time.
Which is?
Wherever it's at, we'll find the hard bottom.
Right, right. Well, you see, is this gonna interrupt these tiles or anything if you get deep enough or am I gonna have to do something different there?
That would be, we'd have to do something different there if there's tiles crossing.
Well, that's one tile. Then I've got a tile that runs to the west of my west driveway and it involves my house and it runs down that ditch. Now...
In the ditch or down the ditch?
It's in the ditch. I know that's right. And the only other thing I've got, I don't want you disturbing me, but I guess the ditch is filled in front of my house because it really makes it easy for me to mow. I still remember that, too. But when this, when the time comes, I don't know how, I had this as a two thousand and fifteen project.
No, it is sixteen because...
We had grading contracts and for your information, it could be later on this summer or fall because we have grading contractors that are hungry. And they're asking us what they were doing and we're not quite ready for it, but it's a possibility. We couldn't let it summer for fall contract.
Yeah, I've had, I've had people contact me about it and they know about this project. Says, well, can't that money be spent someplace else? A little tongue-in-cheek thing about the safest road in Humboldt County out there, the people going to districts right back that guy. Because of the fact that there's no ditches there in place.
Unfortunately, safety and reliability, yeah.
But we're still looking at doing this project down the road.
Yes, we're, that is in the two thousand and sixteen year one project.
Well, you're thinking maybe letting, you know the estimated cost on that whole project?
We haven't had the formal, I know what we have, I can dig it out as to what we have in it.
But I can stop up later and visit you out there. It doesn't make any difference, but it's just the fact that I've had people contacting me and saying, what are they gonna do? Well, I've been out there fifty-three years, guys, I've been on that road and my father's been out there for all them years. And there's never been anything done to that road other than general maintenance. So maybe I'll just, I'll fight you and let you go ahead and do it.
How many years ago?
But anyway, if you're not gonna do that until sixteen, and I'll make these things aware of too, again, Paul or you guys.
Now, we'll fight for it after finding the tile as we're going and deal with it.
Yeah, how many years ago has it been since that tile was put in the ditch?
Well, actually, the tile that goes underneath the road, I had a real bad frost boil in front of my house and the county came out and dug it up and I let them hook into that tile and that solved that problem. But if, if, do you think maybe doing it later this fall or you're gonna wait to sixteen?
Well, we have a couple of local projects to get out of the office and bed and we're gonna see how the contractors' work fill up. Because just, just, we are aware of what contractor's schedules are. Another reason for paving, any of these is dependable on what contractors have for work. And there was a lack of work right now, a year from now, I'm not sure we're gonna have a lack of work because we're throwing an influx of cash into the system. And all of a sudden, the price of tea goes up with supply and demand. I'm looking for your costs right as we speak, it's number thirteen, which, we got a hundred thousand. Some of that, a big chunk of that is local for spreading the rock. But again, the importance of your road is whether you're there for the fifty years or the next fifty years after. You're gonna, there's nothing else between you and the river on the other side and this is the only stretch.
Well, they're not saying how long, I might be there one year, I might be there... He might be there seventy-three now, so who knows? But eventually, I hope if something happens, maybe it's, somebody else will move on that little piece.
We do take into account who lives on the road. For instance, we've had an annual request to pave a road that we haven't done. But because you live on it, it isn't why you're there, but that is a good point as to why we maintain it. But even if nobody lived on that route, Max, we have to maintain that road on the east side of the river because that's the only thing there. And the overall best bang for the buck for the future is to improve the grade on some of these roads, get them up out of the mud and the well-drained structure. A well-drained crown on them.
You're gonna reclaim the boundaries out there from land. Now, from the side of the road out, what is it, thirty feet?
Thirty-three, we got control out there pretty well, so...
You've been out, I'm sure you've had...
Well, you've had surveys right up near neck of the woods, so you got...
We were out there surveying, yeah.
No, we have a couple of roads and we're looking at potentially more grading down the future because we can see what a well-graded road does for us in snow removal and every spring. When it's bone dry in the summer, you can get away with your dirt ungraded road, you can get out into anywhere out of your field with anything, anytime. But as soon as you add snow, wind, rain, ice and thaw, then, then all of a sudden you're limited. And that's why we're looking at your road.
Okay, I just wondered what triggers that to do that project.
Well, at either end of it, it's been improved and this piece in the middle never has been.
Well, absolutely. But anyway, I like, I'll keep in touch with you and I'm just, these three, these three things I wanted to make you aware of. And if anything transpires between now and then, I'd like to be made aware of it so I can...
We'll talk to you about your, we'll look at what's going on by your boundary.
Scenery out there.
Well, thanks, Gary. All eyes are good and just a few, we appreciate your comments.
I got one other thing, I know you guys are looking at white topping and I know you did the Bradgate Road, you did my road two years ago. When they did my road and when they finished that up, they go along and scarify the last top with nails or something.
Tying it.
Tying it to make grooves in it, whatever you wanna do. In my, in my road out there, several places between the, the concrete is chipping out, between where the finds went, is breaking out. There are some cross saws that are, where it was sawed crossways, where it's cracking away from them now. So we're getting some places anywhere from three inches to six inches from those cracks where it's breaking out. They haven't fallen out of the pavement yet, but I would say by the time we get another frost reach another year, we're gonna have to start maintaining cracks there, refilling and stuff like that. Seeing some longitudinal cracks in the road, not a lot of them, but in some areas there are.
Center line?
No, not center line, I mean wheel track.
Really, red tire?
Right.
Where are they, Gary?
Some of them are down there between my place and Thor. I, they see them when I pull in wagons, I see them very easily, we're not going as fast, you can watch the road a little better.
After rain, it usually works good. The center line, we have some reflective cracks right there matching where the old center line or below it. Especially at the intersection of the Badger Blacktop. Otherwise, we have very limited cracking on that road.
Yeah, I like, because I know what's happened on the Badger Blacktop, P fifty-nine there, you get the wheel track dishing with the asphalt, you see that a lot on that. Where that doesn't seem to be happening on the roads and the Bradgate Road seems to be holding up real well, I don't know what traffic it gets on.
We have red tire cracking in plus or minus one mile in one segment, otherwise zero or no cracking once you get away from it. And it's all sub base, sub base, sub base. It's all pond mud underneath it and it still is.
It might be that same case there, it'd be just about a mile east of me where it is on the Thor Blacktop. Just wanted to bring that to your attention, appreciate what you guys are saying.
You know, all the eyes are very helpful, thank you for the comments.
You bet.
And that five-year plan is always connected to Dodge. Anything else before we close the public hearing?
I'm Patty O, I farm out in Devertown, or Paul calls me the troublemaker.
Yeah, you and me.
This has been on the agenda for quite a few years, the bridge on Roosevelt, down by two hundred and seventy-three. And the one structure is not real good and I do have quite a few people have signed this. We'd like to keep it, just replace the one that's bad. The last, I just talked about it not so long ago, when I got the, the last proposal he's had, he wants to curve two roads and bring them together. And I guess functionality for farmers and safety, we've spent a lot of money on keeping things straight. And I just can't see, I mean, I know they've been out at least three times in the last eight years with different plans. We, and I got other people that are gonna sign this, but we'd like to have you make sure and just look at the bridge on Roosevelt, is it Roosevelt that he replaced? I know he thinks it's more expensive and it'd be cheaper on the other one to just take out the two bridges, but the one bridge is probably fine for another thirty, forty years. We'd just like to, and I'd like to see some pricing on just the one bridge being taken out. I know the pipe is expensive, but I guess there's other options out there with maybe box culverts and, and other things. But I just, I don't, I don't think it's an issues plan, I'm not sure what you're, you're talking about it. But we just, I guess we just don't want him to waste his time and come up with these plans that are putting curves in roads. Thank you.
We do have, the latest is that we're trying to see putting a curve in to replace two to one. And that's where we're at so far. We do have our best guess for costs, we're doing all of the above. I mean, we've had a half a dozen alternatives and I think I can get that to your board members, probably got them handy somewhere here that show all the costs. And unfortunately, these two structures are so close to the intersection, that's why it makes it look, it's as feasible to replace two as it is one in the, one as they currently are. In other words, to maintain the status quo for both structures is far, I don't remember that, it's about two and a half or three times the money of each individual structure. And that's why we're looking at trying to save a buck.
But you see, what's the life worth to save a buck? I mean, we're talking functionality and safety out there. Our equipment doesn't get smaller, we don't like curves, elevators don't like that. I mean, I know you keep saying it's cheaper to do away and I just, we just don't feel that that should be an issue.
Again, I keep presenting to the board different options and this last option is very appealing in many ways. I don't think safety will be an issue when we're done, if we would do it with a curve and get rid of two structures and go to one. And saving one life, yeah, we, that's what we are dealing with on a daily basis. If we were designing everything based on saving one life, we would probably have to be careful on how we do that. Because then you would have to tie to traffic counts directly and use and the, and we look at functionality and location... And, and we look at functionality and location and alternatives. This particular segment and area to the south is no snow removal, not only in Humboldt and in Webster County. Uh, east west traffic, uh, there is people on the north south road, but the appears, uh, the traffic is east west after that. They must go to, people that live on the north south must head north for the most part because the highest count is on the north south road in this case.
But once you do the count, those are very busy roads farming season.
Yeah, no, every road is very busy farming season. Yes, I understand that. And, and, uh, and we'll look at the options. The last thing we're doing is, uh, trying to, uh, not do a full board plans, but we're trying to look at needs and, uh, and, uh, we were instructed to put an offer for right of way and, uh, and go from there and see if we can get anybody to play ball with right of way. And if, uh, if, if not with right of way, then we'll go back to the drawing board as to what are options. Unfortunately, that north south road is at such a skew with the road, that's why it's an expensive structure. Uh, it's, seems like it's a hundred and ninety foot of structure or something, uh, those blocks.
I thought it was like a hundred and eighty feet.
Okay, a hundred and eighty foot of structure if we replace it as is and that's what adds to the cost greatly. A mile east, we have new structure, uh, on, on states. Uh, states is throughout, uh, with the addition of this north end of states, that will be a through path all the way to the county, uh, all the way through Webster County. So around these structures, uh, there is and continues to be good roads and good alternatives. And, uh, we're looking at it. Yes, we keep changing. Uh, we haven't come up with anything solid that anybody wants to jump on and proceed with. Uh, the best that we've done so far is to do nothing. And that won't work much longer, uh, that's, that's going to have to happen.
Well, I visit with you about rail cars because we've done one project with the rail cars. I know some of the issue is how do you join these rail cars end to end to get the length that you need? Uh, are the rail cars big enough and badger to handle the, the waterfall that they threw that structured now?
I think we were looking at one time on version two of this, I think it was a nine foot diameter box or pipe, if I remember, a multi plate. And, and therefore nine footers would be big enough to, uh, as you and I talked, it would be like the sippy cups that you used to shake out to drink water. And you'd get, start with a nine footer and then maybe get a nine and six and maybe a ten footer on the end, it'd be the easiest way.
Yeah, just slip them inside each other a little bit.
It'd take three, I mean, uh, it'd take three sixty footers here, uh, and I don't know that that would be feasible for this case or not, uh, but, uh, that's what we've talked about.
Because I'm, I'm in favor with Pat about, I just hate putting curves in roads, um, on T intersections where we don't really need them. Uh, and that other bridge, I think it's like a rock. It's, it's wide enough that people, it doesn't have any, the reason it doesn't have rails is they've cut them off, I believe.
Yes. And, and, and you want to talk safety, that's...
Yeah, I know. There's an issue. There's an issue there too.
Uh, the corners, that one's, uh, nineteen, vintage nineteen twenties, uh, the northeast corner of that is, needs some work on.
I've been out with that.
And yes, it wouldn't make the five year plan stand alone.
Right.
I, I don't know if it would give you a clarity, but shield down.
But the one on those...
Shield down because I've been long enough, so...
Looks to be like we got to have lots of scrutiny on the next year's revisiting of five year plan. So let's, we appreciate the input.
Well, this one will come up and I'll get with Pat before, we're not doing anything under the cover of darkness. I'll get a hold of you when we, if, uh, our last direction is to try to finalize, to make sure we have whatever right of way we need and to get agreements, uh, for right of way.
Well, I know you've asked, talked to one guy about right of way, but that's one person and he wants the money. And I just hope that you, you guys all take into consideration the people on this list are all tax payers out in Beaver Township. Well, look, we have a, a good say in what's going to happen.
Okay. I, uh, I heard Pat on that deal and I'm glad Rick's looking at it and I hope you all a lot take a look at it. Um, I hope, I want some thousands of wishel over that bridge in one day last year and it doesn't, it's not a problem with the bridge, but if you have to make a curve and then make a two hundred and seventy degree corner back, it creates a lot of problems and especially if you start doing it in a semi. Because these roads aren't wide enough to make that kind of turn with a semi. Uh, so, and the other thing is if you're coming down Roosevelt Avenue at fifty-five mile an hour and all of a sudden you're used to it being going straight and all of a sudden we made a curve in there, we're going to have people in the drainage. Uh, you talk about safety and money. Uh, I know you got a grant for what you did up east to widening the curve, uh, the shoulders and the curves up east to Livermore. To me, I've driven that and talk about a waste of dollars. For what little that widened that and putting the rumble strip out on the shoulder, by the time you hit that rumble strip, you're too late. And look, we already have one fatality on those curves again this year and it had nothing to do with how wide that shoulder was and the previous two fatalities up there probably wouldn't have made a difference either if you had that on there. So I mean, you guys got to take a little more scrutiny, I think, on where some of these dollars and, yeah, it's a grant, but where's that grant money come from? It comes from our pockets. It's our taxes. So we gotta, we gotta watch those things a little bit more, I think, but in this case down there, I don't know how many, I haven't signed past petition, but I, and I know there's a lot of others will if it ever comes to that, I'll do it yet Pat. So we'll take a look.
We can't replace everything status quo. Yep, we got ten cent tax and these guys have to make decisions as to what gets prioritized every year and the wish list is far exceeds that five year plan and we've pruned the wish list to that. And, and, and you've been there before on that too, is, uh, the needs or the wishes out, uh, out, uh, dollar wise are far exceed, uh, any income we have and that's what, exactly what they're doing is looking as, uh, uh, keeping a responsible funding. Um, some of these things are going to have to change even with a dime, the status quo cannot be maintained. And something's going to change in some of them, whether this is a particular road that changes, don't know, don't know yet, but something is going to give. It can't go on the way it is.
But even though the bridge that a box covered on two seventy is all six inches above grade for the bottom of the ditch, it's still a good structure and it's going to stand there for a long time, so why, why bother with that one, take the one off of the other?
There is no bottom on that.
There used to be a...
There might have been, but it's been cut out.
Okay.
A lot of them were bottoms where they were jackhammered out decades ago, so I can't...
Can't be too many decades ago because it was there when I was on the board, so.
Other comments? We appreciate the input. Just thanks, uh, a lot more scrutiny, we have to stop moving forward. Go ahead, second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have before us and we have two resolutions we need to approve or, one of them would be, uh, the budget, one of them would be the road construction. We need second motions of the roads, I assume.
I'll make a motion to approve on what coming up, like twenty sixteen secondary road budget.
I'll second. Motion in second to approve the FY sixteen road budget. Do I, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. So we have road construction.
I'll make the motion to approve the Humboldt County FY twenty sixteen secondary road construction program.
Second.
Second by heart. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion is carries. We thank you very much for the discussion and we'll see what shakes out. Moving along our agenda, I see Don's here to talk about spring, the ditches. Don, you think it's going to have a bit of weed throw this year?
The tree is...
It's a lot of things. Oh, yeah. It's a year in the...
It's that time of year. We've got the guy back, uh, a week and a half ago.
Really?
It is good since we got shut down early last year in the fall. So, and Rick, I don't know if I'm...
Yeah, I, I've met you last year.
I guess I just don't, I don't remember. I've seen you enough times.
Well, he's so quiet, he's kind of...
Yeah. He's a stick up. All I want to do is just bring, uh, bring you up to date on your brush control, uh, maintenance program. Uh, this year, the ditches that I inspected are in the northeast, uh, third of the county. It's from highway, uh, one sixty-nine east and then from highway three north. We've got, if you remember, that's how we have the, the counties split up in thirds. Now, next year we'll be in the lower third, highway three south to the, the county line. And basically what this is, this is a continuation, I did go out and look at all the ditches the last week and things are, I mean, you've got one of the cleaner counties that we work in basically because, uh, we've been doing the program for so long and then before she had another individual that was doing it, uh, for your ends, another company. Uh, the only thing that I've mentioned there, I do have, uh, HGH, uh, one hundred, one thirty-one ninety-three. Uh, we did do that one last year. Uh, what the situation there was is, uh, for all the years that we've been treating that ditch, the, up in the Cassuth County side, there's a bulkhead up there. However, we were, we didn't realize that the, the ditch actually went beyond that. It's more like a, looks more like a waterway than a, an actual ditch, but, uh, the landowner there complained to the supervisor up there, so instead of having the guys do part of that last year, we just went ahead and did your side as well. So that one, uh, is allowed rotation until the next time through.
Sure. Makes sense. Does chemical going to go up this year? Cost you more money?
Uh, some of it has, but the stuff we used on drainage has not. Uh, the only thing that has gone up is the oil that we use for basal and that went up about twenty cents a gallon. Uh, it's, uh, we're looking at best stuff is like eleven twenty a gallon now applied, but, uh, we use that like in your county because we have such a low stem densities, we don't have to use a lot of it. The thing that's nice about that is you can do a dormant stem treatment before the crop gets planted. And what I've been seeing unfortunately in, uh, some of the kinds I'm, I'm inspecting this spring is a lot of acres that used to be CRP have recently been turned. So it appears to be that more and more landlords are not buying into the CRP program, which makes it more difficult for us to get out there. We have to be there during the off season when the crop isn't there.
If you have a bottom line on there, it could run from twenty-five to thirty thousand.
Yeah, this, uh, the quote this year was thirty-three, two fifty and, uh, I do have from, uh, two thousand twelve, uh, the quote in two thousand twelve was twenty-seven, two fifty and the actual amount was seventeen thousand, nine fifty-nine. Uh, the reason for that, I've explained this before, is because each one of these individual ditches as well as any of the laterals has to be a separate project and is built out separately. So I quote them all separately, you know, think, as I said before, if we could just come in and say, well, we can do all the ditches for twenty thousand dollars. Uh, if you have a landowner coming in wanting to know specifically what his is going to cost, this way it's broken down and they can look at it and you can explain, yeah, this is a top end and, you know, your time material is not to exceed that.
I think you're, what I've been around, you're more, you're committing a few thousand less than you had this day.
Well, I try to make sure because I, when I look at ditches, and you guys, you guys that have ridden with me before, you know, I don't drive every mile in town trees. I go and look from bridge to bridge. If I had to drive every mile, I'd have to hire assistance to do counties for me because, uh, we've got so much stuff that we're doing right now. Another thing that we, we want to start doing too, if we can, is, and I'll get with, uh, your drainage office here, is instead of billing to separate counties, like I, what I'm trying to do is, is where we're doing all the counties in the area, uh, trying to figure out which counties are, writing down which counties are controlled counties and then instead of having us bill it to the non-controlled county and have them, have them send it to the control county, what I'm trying to do is get a map, put together on all my customers and just send it up to the control county.
That would be good.
To save some time and some paperwork.
That would be good.
We're already doing that with your ditches on the south end with, uh, Webster County.
That would be good.
Now, you've got, uh, a couple up there in the north end, uh, Cassuth County, you've got a, a couple over on the, uh, the east side too, uh, with Wright County. Now, I'll be seeing them, in fact, I'm trying to put myself on a schedule, I just want to be over there at ten thirty.
Yeah.
But, uh, it just makes more sense, I guess, for all concern is to go ahead and bill them to the controlling county even though it is physically in your county.
No, this is up in my area and Rick's area, so if it does do, it does help. I mean, you need to stay on it. We see places where one gets missed and then it becomes a forty year old tree and we had one here a few years ago and it falls into the creek, well, then we have a five thousand dollar bill to clean up a tr, a big tree or twenty-five hundred, whatever. Yeah. So...
Like, I think that was down on one of your ditches, was that on number nine, was it a big tree out there?
Yeah.
Because I think I...
Noticed it being gone.
I noticed it being gone.
Yeah, so, no, this looks good, Don. Thanks.
Yeah, did catch right down sometime. My eyes fucked you up on out there. Usually tell us when you're coming, you tell the sheriff and...
Yeah, we'll let the sheriff know, we'll let the, we'll contact, uh, the daughter's office so they can let all the board know when we're out there. Then we also contact, uh, local law enforcement when the, you know, when the guys are starting and then we also call them and the guys get done, so if something happens after the fact. We had some issues up in, it wasn't last year, it's been several years ago, somebody stealing flags, marker flags.
They didn't know what they were for and they told them up probably.
They, uh, so, but, uh, anyway, we like to, you know, if you do get a landowner that doesn't realize what we're doing, I think I told you this story before too, we did some work, uh, uh, east of town several years ago and it was during hunting season and he had a, a local hunter out there just stirring up everybody in the neighborhood. And one of my guys, in fact, they, they, the one guy walked up to the landowner to, because the guy, he, the hunter finally got a hold of somebody, so why don't we just go call the guy or talk to the guy and see what they're, what they're up to?
Right.
So that, that guy went out and was talking with my, one of my applicators and my applicator says, well, how you doing today? He says, better than you, you got a lynch mob out after you. Well, what they've been doing, they, they were running the ditches with the four wheelers and there just happened to be some deer right in the jungle.
They started chasing deer.
And they thought, they're, they're local hunters, a big hunter, I don't, I don't even remember his name, but he, a real avid hunter, thought the guys were out doing something illegal, driving deer and...
Yeah.
But, uh, that's why we like to let the sheriff know and then that way if somebody does call the sheriff, he can say, yeah, you've got people working out there. Now, one thing we have gone to also, it's been several years now, is we've got the guys wearing the same color as what your, your maintenance people do, you know, secondary roads, the safety yellow or whatever they call it, the gray. You know, that, I guess, has eliminated almost all of my nuisance complaints.
Yeah, they're not out there in their...
Well, people realize that...
They've all his camo jacket.
Well, if people realize that they're out there being, wanting to be seen, they're probably not doing anything illegal.
Right. What time of year you think it'd be out here?
Depends on the weather. We can start, uh, we've got, uh, right now because of the, the early snow we had last year, we're finishing up a couple of counties up our area that we didn't get done last year because, uh, we had that early snow in November and then we did get a little bit more done in December, but it's pretty early season for us last year, so... But your ditches can pretty much be done anytime. I mean, they're just regular maintenance, so it could be this spring if, uh, we don't get in and get them done before the, the crops starts getting big, then it'll be next fall.
Very good. Okay. Thank you for the update.
All right. We'll let you know when we get started. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Don. You got some tax sale information for us?
I do.
We'll make a C P A work.
The city of Livermore, it was excitement, so, tax note certificate seventy-nine from two thousand eight, property in the city that they demolished the home and have a city-certified bill on there, about a little over three thousand dollars. County home certificate since two thousand eight, there's not been any tax payments on it since two thousand thirteen. So they're just requesting the assignment and abatement of the state tax, so they can begin their ninety-day right of redemption and take ownership.
Like we've done with some of these other properties, it looks like.
Yeah, from what I read in the city minutes, they want to put a well or a water tower.
Water tower.
Is this a vacant lot at the moment?
It is, it is private time, yes, because they removed the house in two thousand.
They've cleaned up some of it already.
Yeah, they cleaned it up.
She called me a while back, see if this is something that they could do, and I said, I'm sure there won't be any problem with it, because it's cleaning it up, get it back on the.
No taxes paid, they're two oh seven.
Two thousand, what, six, seven, tax year old.
Okay.
Like you said, the house is gone, it's just a vacant lot.
I make a mo, okay, I'll make a motion, too. Go ahead and sign the tax sales certificate request, rebate the taxes for these lots, and we go to.
Second motion.
Just a certification, how much are, I'm looking at the certificate, yeah, I needed that one, removing this app.
You'll have to get us out of here.
Do you want the, I can't remember if we do just tax or we do penalty also?
Yeah, I don't know.
Because we let it list them both.
Um, the tax is, um.
Four thousand sixteen.
Four thousand sixty, um, and then, whatever, those three together.
Okay, so it's the fifty-two, fifty-five, we're talking everything?
Yeah, okay.
You keep that in motion and second?
Yes.
Any discussion on the motion, debate, pay the fees and interest of fifty-two, fifty-five? All those favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried.
Unfortunately, that four thousand dollar figure is a three thousand dollar fee, demolishing the, so it is a property tax.
Thank you. I didn't want to add to you. But you tell us whether you did things right last year, right?
Right.
Looks good, because I don't speak the sheriff here. Anderson Company, audit.
I'll leave you. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. You guys don't have time to work on audits for tax even though, do you? Oh, yeah. I have a lot I'm going up for that. Oh, man.
I'm Steve Hutcheson with T P Anderson Company here in Humboldt. If you'll turn to page two, independent auditors' report. Basically, it says that management's responsibility for the financial statements, which says the county is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of these financial statements. Our responsibility is to audit these and express an opinion if they are fairly presented. This year, we have present, we have an unmodified opinion, which means that we do agree that the audited statements are presented fairly. If you return to page twelve, it's a statement of position, shows that we have total assets of twenty-nine million dollars. Of that, twelve point, or thirteen million is capital assets. Total liabilities of nine point five million, and net position of nineteen point six million. Turn to the next page, and it's the government-wide financial statements. So you know, we have net income of approximately eleven point two million, and expenses of ten point six million. So our change, our net, change in net position was a positive six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So our net position went from eighteen point nine to nineteen point six. Turn to the following page, it kind of goes through the major, major programs. General funds. Whoops, I'm sorry. Go to page sixteen. General fund went up three hundred thousand dollars. Mental health fund was down two hundred and seventy-four. Rural services was up four thousand. Secondary road was up three hundred and seventy-four thousand. Drainage districts were up three hundred and forty-nine thousand, and non-major programs were down eighty-five thousand. And then we have some graphs to take a quick look at. On page six, we have our, basically our net position, shows that our capital assets stayed almost, well, stayed steady as compared to the prior year. Restricted assets are up, up about three hundred thousand, and unrestricted assets are up three hundred thousand. And if you go back to page eight, it kind of gives you a breakdown of revenues by source. Biggest portion, of course, is property tax. Other general revenues are twenty-eight percent, and operating grants and restrictions are twenty-one percent. Then you look down, and it will tell you that our roads and transportation make up twenty-seven percent, of our expenses, non-program is twenty-seven percent. Public safety is fifteen percent, and administration is nine percent. And once again, we've enjoyed doing your audit. We had great cooperation from everyone, and we appreciate the opportunity to serve the county. Any questions?
Yeah, just, I probably asked you some questions. What's the difference between restricted and unrestricted? What's that kind of fund that restricts?
Okay, basically, all the funds other than the general funds are pretty much restricted in one way or another.
Like the highway would be a mental health category?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And restricted basically means it can be used only for.
For that area, right, yeah. Nothing to write us up on, that's good, isn't it?
No, we just had a couple of little comments. The annual financial report was a little late, and that has sort of currently been cleaned up, and the just certification was a little late, but both of those have now been taken care of.
Looks good. Thank you, Steve. Anybody get questions? Go home and put this under your pillow and read it?
Read it.
Yeah. Okay, we need a motion to accept and place on file our annual audit. Motion by Harlan.
Second.
Motion by Rick. We have motion and a second to approve and place on file our audit. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve.
How many hours did you take to do this? Lots of hours. Some here and some there.
Yeah.
Bye, here. Thank you very much.
I got everybody's signature at Pearl's.
Okay.
So do you want me to get it now, or just bring it down to you?
Get it now. I'll put these in the mirror.
Okay, that would be good.
Do we have anything else to come before the board today?
I got one comment. I looked at drainage district one oh three, he's starting on it Friday, and he probably is going to be done with it today already. Masked, he's doing, he's really moving along. We've got eighteen inch remaining.
Where's that one, oh, three?
Uh, both. By the rural bits and middle, he used to do.
Is it east of the wood?
Yeah, just east.
It's a, what, a kind of, there's a kind of weave in in the house underneath the railroad tracks, that one?
Yeah, the railroad tracks are, one might.
Yeah, okay. This one we just got, we got it signed, lined up a couple weeks ago, right?
Yeah.
I can't say.
No, no, it's the name that came in here.
This was last summer, last fall, we, we discussed one of his projects, and he just got it done.
Okay, yeah. That's right, okay.
Peggy's got to bring forth, too.
Yep, just had a letter from D A Davidson, that's the company that's doing the bonding and everything for us, the financial part, just letting us know that Chip Schultz is no longer with their company. So, this is from Scott Stevenson, so he was on our team also, will continue to take care of things. Is that time of year again when we do all of our certifications for our financial assurance for the landfill? And so Harlem is back, so I'll get him to sign all the financial documents that doesn't take any board action, but needs to be sent in. We received from I D D A our billing today on the waterworks lawsuit funding, and there's also a letter along with it. I suppose you guys should discuss whether you're going to be a part of that or not. I think he even maybe has a resolution or something, or he wants that, which could be on next week's agenda.
Okay. Isn't that everybody in the state, just people agreeing?
What is, how does he do that, Peggy? Does he just want us to say, yeah, we're going to give?
He did send an invoice for the five thousand. And, but in his note, he says, we would like all counties to contribute to him.
Well, I guess I was just remembering. What if only.
It doesn't get used.
Yeah, if not, not enough counties say, yeah, we're going to give five thousand. Is there, is there a trigger mechanism there?
I'll let you read the letter, but I don't believe he addresses that, and so that might be a good point to bring up.
That's from I D D A.
They're wanting us to donate.
Yeah, but they can be a part of.
But that's, I guess you would.
I think we'll do it for three years.
Yeah, it says a five thousand year for a three-year time commitment. If it's resolved more quickly, we could potentially cancel the second and third years of the commitment, and it would be up to the board. And these funds would only be used for I D D A intervention into the lawsuit and related costs. Feels we cannot do this without strong commitment from a hundred percent of our, of our members. He feels larger percent participation by would be more persuasive in the argument that we go to with the U S District Court. So he's kind of trying to get just the support from all counties that we're back in the same position, I guess. And, that's a long line. Oh, let's see, huh, see, where is, where is, where is? Okay, that's just the way it is.
That's the resolution, that's.
Yeah.
So that's why I thought I'd give it to you this week, let you guys look it over.
I wonder if we should talk to John Beatty about this, because we're spending our taxpayers' money in our county defending another county. I know it's above our interest.
We got a board meeting on the eighth of April. So it'd be a week from Wednesday.
Okay, next thing then. Received from Brad Schumberg, the architect with I N F doing the law enforcement center. And they've got some proposals for soil, boring, work. And so I've got those two proposals here. I'll let you look through those.
Quite a difference in the cost, twenty-two.
Yeah, and he said he would, he was assuming this would go through the L E C board, but we've been running everything through the supervisors, because the building is ours. So I'm assuming this will go through you guys, unless you have something.
Cut that out in front? Yes, they want to do boring samples, see how stable the soil is. And, you know, like they say, sometimes you find out there's been an existing foundation there that you have to deal with, so it'll affect the cost. I didn't want any surprises.
So let's you guys take a look at that, too, then, and we can put that on a future agenda. Highway twenty, Association sent us the bill for the two thousand fifteen dues. We did pay dues last year, we paid it in May, May twelfth, fourteen. We haven't paid anything since then. They just said, kind of asking, are you going to renew your dues or not? And I didn't know if you wanted me to put that on the next claim date or not.
What they paid in last year.
You know, I just laid down the amount, but we're a county.